I have been smiling. Even in thirty mile an hour winds on a golf course, I smile. Okay, time is five o'clock. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Danielle, who we have the floor for?
Rice?
Here.
Karate Simon? Lappy?
Here.
Casey?
Here.
Rahah?
Here.
Superintendent?
Here.
Okay, in the fall to order, we have a quorum. Item number two is public comment. See nobody out there? We'll move on to item three, recognition of any guests and visitors. We have Steve Rockola from Masabe TV with us today. And he is going to, I think, explain how the recording of the T of this board meeting works, how much it costs, and how we're gonna manage it. So Steve, you have the floor.
Alright. Thank you, everybody, for letting me come here. It's always easier to explain in person over emails and phones and things and stuff. So what we can do with Masabi Committee Television, we can record the meetings in several different ways. Mostly other school boards, they just have a meeting recorded and then put on YouTube later and then also rebroadcast on Channel thirteen. It's on public access. So that's the basic way to do it, or we have capabilities to go live as well, straight to YouTube, while it's live happening right now. And then third way, we can do live to YouTube and live to Channel thirteen. So those are kind of the options. Each of them costs, you know, a little bit more. I think the base is like a hundred dollars a meeting, just to show up. There is one thing though, I do want to verify because we have a contract with the city of Chisholm, and you guys might already be included in that. So for a basic thing, I just want to verify with that. I was trying to dig up the contract in the last couple of weeks to review it. I just honestly haven't had much time. It's been a busy, busy fall.
What does that mean?
So as per the contract with the city of Chisholm, we might already provide services. And the thing I need to verify is that means we already come and record it, or you guys can put it on public access. So that's just what I need to verify. I think it's the latter, that you guys already have the access to public access. So it's just a matter of getting the meetings recorded and put on there. Because one thing I used to do, I would just go into your YouTube channel, download the video, edit it so it would format properly in public access and put it on that way. And then I think you guys stopped recording them or something like that. So those during the pandemic.
Okay. Pricing?
It bases a hundred dollars a meeting. I think you guys meet twice a month?
Yeah.
Okay. And then, and roughly about how long do the meetings last? I don't remember off the...
Well...
I think they're about an hour.
Let's, let's just say, let's just say forty-five minutes to an hour.
Alright, that's what I thought. And, yeah, that's, that's what I thought. That's, regardless, even if it's a three-hour meeting, we still pay our cameraman the same price. So, and they understand that. If it's, we've had some meetings gone fifteen minutes and some meetings gone four and a half hours. So it's just the deal that we make with our subcontractors, like I'm recording the meeting.
So do we have to sign a contract or anything like that? Or how does this work verifying what the city's doing?
Yep, I gotta verify with the city first and then, yeah, we can just sign a contract. It depends. Do you guys want it recorded live or just want it recorded and put on playback on YouTube and Channel thirteen?
I guess first we would need to see, does the hundred dollars, does that include all of that?
It includes the going live to YouTube.
Okay, so I guess we need to review the contract first and then make a vote prior to...
Do you guys, do you guys have any questions related to that recording? Or what that would actually look like? We, I will say we give about forty-eight hours after the meeting is recorded, allow it to go online. So that just gives us time to edit and get it uploaded to make sure it has...
How long?
Forty-eight hours.
Forty-eight.
Yep. Yeah, so it would be up, but today's Tuesday? It'd be up by Thursday at five o'clock.
Okay, so now...
That would be live.
No. No, that wouldn't be the live.
That would be just if we did just the recording.
Yep, and that would be playback to Channel thirteen. But if you did live straight to YouTube, it would be in the moment.
Immediate, okay.
Yep.
So we, we could do both?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep, those are the options.
Yeah. So are you gonna verify with, with the city or are we gonna have to do that?
I can do that. I have, I have signed contract with them, so I can just, as soon as I pull it up, I can find it.
Yeah. So I'm gonna ask you to send it to Superintendent Norman? And then we will take a look at it and
Okay.
if we're gonna go with it, we will, and if not, you know...
And did you say it was a hundred dollars if we do it live or not?
No, that, that includes going live to YouTube at the moment.
Okay.
Yeah, otherwise if it's just coming here recorded, it'd be like fifty dollars.
Oh, okay, okay, got it. Okay. So, yeah, that's, I guess, we would need this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I gave you the three levels of options, kind of what that entails. And then I just need to verify with the city. I can call, gosh, I'm trying to blink.
Stephanie.
Yep, Stephanie, and she'll have that information too, so...
Okay, so if you do that, let Superintendent know.
Sure.
And then send us, send the superintendent. Adrian?
We actually meet with the city tomorrow at three-thirty. So if you can get that info, the same message, that'll be to everyone at the same time.
Yeah, we'll, we'll be there recording that one, so... I can get it to you.
Where are we meeting?
I can get it to you by tomorrow, for sure.
Great, Michael, my business card, so in thirty lead.
Yeah.
Oh, so you're, we're meeting here, you know that already, you must.
If you're recording? At the city of Chisholm.
I mean, he's at twenty-third.
Yeah.
At five-thirty.
Oh, at five-thirty.
When you guys are at the city hall?
We're meeting at three-thirty with the city.
Okay, it doesn't speak special meetings. Okay, I thought you meant the city hall meeting, okay. Yeah, I can, then what I'll do is I'll call Stephanie in morning, get that information so you guys don't have it by that, by that meeting.
Perfect, thank you very much, yeah, thank you.
Alright. Any quick, any questions?
Thank you from the members. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Okay. Item four is approval of the agenda. Under discussion for the agenda is the dealer group, who is working with Injensa on our referendum. And we're gonna get a phone call. Adrian's gonna call and they're gonna explain what the program is and stuff like that. So that's on there. And then also, it's come to my attention rather severely that the south end of the elementary school is unlocked. And people are angry about it. So we're gonna ask Adrian for an update from Injensa and where we're at and how we're trying to do this and stuff like that. So the public will know to a certain extent, but I get it, I understand, you know. But parts are parts and time is time. So we'll have a little discussion on that. Okay. Other than that, and then also, under information, Rams has her annual meet dinner. And it's in the Iron Trail Events Center on December fifteenth of two thousand and twenty-two. And the keynote speaker is Senator Tom Bach. And we are invited, so we'll have to register for that with Lisa. And Lisa can...
And when is it, did you say?
Huh?
When?
It's December fifteenth of twenty-two.
Can I ask
Yeah.
why under information is accepting resignation? Shouldn't that be under...
No, well, we've been doing it wrong all these years. So it's a HIPAA violation.
Oh.
And we can explain more a little later.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
Yeah, I've been doing it wrong all these years. So anyhow, anyway, that's, that's the agenda. And so I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Okay, support.
Shelley? And support? By you.
Yeah.
Cindy?
By me.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carries. Moving on to reports, item A is the superintendent's report. Adrian?
Thank you. So the dealer group had sent prior to the last meeting a proposal for video production at ten thousand dollars and the board voted to not move forward with that. Been numerous meetings with them since then. And I've been working with them on a couple of different things and there is a large volume of information already out there. And I met with a retired superintendent that used their firm to pass a referendum. And they put together a significant reduced cost to do multiple short videos with possibly board members, myself, community members, and push those out. That's gonna be coming up for a vote. The one thing that the retired superintendent said to me was, I wanted to go to sleep that night knowing I did everything I could to try to get it passed. And he felt that the video had the biggest impact in their situation. I believe they were in Watertown Mayor. Don't owe me to that one. He said a year later, he ran into somebody in, in the store and said, had you not done that video, I wouldn't have done it. And so that kind of stuck with me. So you'll be asked to vote on a reduced rate, set of videos from, from them later on in the meeting. So I just wanted to make you aware of that.
And that's who we're talking to? He's in a taxi? Yeah.
He will talk to us at the end of the meeting just regarding, he's putting a letter out that you have a sample of in front of you as a board, what's gonna go out in the mailer. And then he's just got some communications, things he wants to walk through and share with you. So we're all on the same page. Any questions on that?
I guess, what would be the difference between him doing these videos and like, say, the C E S committee that's doing videos? Would they hit a different demographic or...?
So it's a professional video and I felt the same way you did prior. Talking to that superintendent gave me a little mind shift on, we should probably do this, in my opinion. And the professional video was really well done. And if that's what we need to communicate out to the public so that they can see it and hear it and...
We have less than a month, so how soon are they gonna...
I have to notify them tonight whether it passes.
But then once it passes, so how soon are they gonna be here to get these videos out? I mean, are we talking like the video is gonna go out for maybe a week before?
They're gonna do it over Zoom. They should have their first one done by Thursday. They've already got a list of people that they've reached out to and contacted if this passes. So they're ready to go. They thought it was gonna happen today, but they forgot that the meeting was moved from Monday to Tuesday, so...
And that...
Go ahead.
That's all it's gonna go out to be is Zoom or it's not gonna...
No, they're going to do the interviews over Zoom and then edit it.
Gotcha.
That way instead of before, they're gonna send a whole crew up here to do videos. But there's such a wealth of information out there where they have tons of screen, you know, stills and things that, you know, stuff like Danielle put together and things like that. So that's, that's the update there. I did attend the Indian Education Committee meeting on October third at Vima. And we talked about strategies moving forward. And interesting outcome was, one of the parents who lives near the school was concerned that the district was going to use eminent domain and purchase a block and relocate folks. And I just wanted to say publicly that that is far from the truth. It was hearsay and it was based on there was street construction going on behind this high school and they saw trucks and people measuring and, and it was actually for a water main break and, and some issues there. So I put her at ease and asked her to talk to her neighbors. And I said, I would mention this publicly so anyone watching, they also won't get that information. Okay. We're waiting on a quote from CTC. They did a tour here on October fourth to update our phone and communication systems. Joe Phillips walked him through all of our buildings and showed him everything we have, gave him the list of all of our numbers and, and extensions and what we would need. Since our last meeting, we've had hit or miss. So we are having Steve come up next Thursday to do a complete system reset. And we may or may not lose some information then, but he thinks he has a way to back it up and try to reset it. So that's number one. Number two, these are codes that he's seen, he's never seen before and he's worried that there's bigger problems. But we're gonna at least start there and try to get us to limp by as long as we can. But as soon as I get that information, I will share that out. I did talk to them about anything we do now. Once, and if the referendum passes, is this something we could easily reuse? And these are plug and play phones that are attached to the person. And so if it's a music department phone, it just goes. And once it's plugged in, it still says music department in the person's extension. And then there's options with it that we'll have to discuss because everything has a price to it. But they have calls that go to your email that can be played as a voicemail, which is a really nice feature. I had that at my last site. So I can just pull it up on my phone and I could hear the voicemail right there and get a real instant response to someone. So I, I asked them to go through and look at some of those things. They don't have a system that truly is designed just for the buses, but they feel that they can integrate if we do a new system on the bus with, with the most current things. So, excuse me, there'll be more to come on that once we get some more information. I'll address now, since it's on my list, about the securing the Chisholm Elementary front entryway. I added an email out to Luke today and then when I was in a meeting with him, I asked him to reach back out to all of the vendors to see where they're at. So certain parts of the entryway are here. The glass is here, there's some things here. The elevator parts are an issue. I asked him if he could fast-track at least getting the video phone up and running. So if the video phone's up and running, it may not work with a push button to open the doors, but they can press and talk to you and say, I'm here for a delivery, you can come let me in. And then one of us would go down and open the door for the person. Not ideal, a push button's great, but we need to secure it as best we can. I did send an email out to all staff about securing their doors during the school day. But we're aware and there are some parts on back order. And I hope we can get at least parts of this fast-tracked as soon as possible to address the security piece of this. Any questions on that? I applied for a grant with Lake Country Power. I'll know by the end of November. It's in addition to our Smart Lab and I'm hopeful we get that. It's like a communication center where they can do video announcements and shout casting for esports. It's, it ties into the lab itself. So I'm hopeful that you're chosen for that. I'll let you know in November, one way or another. I did share with the board the letter from the Department of Ed regarding a positive review and comment. That will be put in the newspaper over the next few days, so shortly that'll be in there. And then Alex and I were in an email chain about all of the election information. There's deadlines where we have to put certain things out for that. And so those are all being ready to be inserted into the paper as well. So that's all I had, unless you had any questions for me?
How much is that grant for Lake Country?
I believe I asked for fifty K.
Okay.
More, a little more, I'm not sure. I think the whole project was sixty to seventy.
Okay.
So we'll see.
Okay.
The, the grant was for up to a hundred thousand dollars for projects.
Okay.
And so I wrote it as in, this would be a phase two to the project that we just put in. So I'm hopeful.
Okay. Any questions? Go ahead.
So regarding the Department of Ed, the Department of Ed basically approving our referendum to move forward, that means we need less votes than what we...
Fifty percent plus one.
Okay.
So we got what's called a favorable or positive review.
Okay. I don't remember if it was fifteen or sixteen, then seven, I don't know.
So if it wasn't a positive or unfavorable, we would have needed sixty plus one.
Okay.
Okay. Alright, thanks Adrian. Moving on, I have a meeting principal's report. Carla?
Hi, everyone. We just got in the, the products we had our fundraiser and we sold over twenty thousand dollars in fundraiser products. So we'll see how much, that's amazing.
Wow, great.
Yeah, we'll see what that comes out to for what we actually get back, the kickback from it. But with that, we then will be able to have our Fall Festival that's planned for October thirty-first. So we're already working on ideas, activities, treats, all of that good stuff for the kids on October thirty-first. So if you're not busy that day and you wanna come join, I'll let you know what time. We have our School G training tomorrow. As such, we have a beginners class at Advanced and a think tank offered. So when we have early release, we'll be working on some our School G training and offer different levels of who needs the support. So that's nice. The water main, I'm not gonna steal Mike's thunder, but we have big old piles of dirt by, behind the Vaughn and so they look like they've been having fun playing in the dirt. And we had buses come in the front of the school and that seems to be going okay. We're, you know, having our paraprofessionals out there to make sure kids are safe. But it seems to be going well. We're continuing our PBIS assemblies on Friday. We did have Cordelia Stark come and sing our National Anthem at the PBIS Assembly just to honor her. She's amazing. She gave me the chills that night. Looks like there's over seven thousand people that have watched the volleyball one that she did. So that was really great. And this past week, this past week, we started up our math enrichment with our kiddos. And then our sixth grade also attended the St. John's case. So lots of fun stuff happening and we're already into October and May is around the corner. And so, yeah, good things are happening.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any questions for Carla?
Thanks, Carla.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Athletics and Activities, Mr. Rocky is not with us. Facilities and Garage Report, Mike?
Good evening, everybody.
Good afternoon.
So a few things we've been working on. So got a vehicle list now after securing two vehicles and getting rid of the old suburban. We have everything kind of organized as far as unit numbers and that sort of thing. Buses, the vans, the suburbans to maintenance vehicles, which streamlines everything with the city as well since we get fuel down there. And this conversation with Mystic from the city today. And so it's, it's very helpful as far as tracking those vehicles versus all the different repetitive numbers that we had in the past. So again, thank you for your support on that. Working on some old bus sales. Reached out to three different vendors and have a couple of options for either store credit or cash value. And looking at the last two buses that were diverted from Dubid. It's fifty, five thousand one hundred and thirty-eight dollars and we're looking to do a little bit better than that from some of the options that we have. So we're just trying to secure those funds and getting those old buses that we don't need. So, and then as Carla mentioned, the pipeline project going down to Vaughn is going pretty good, coordinating with the kitchen using that cooler. And a big shipment coming in tomorrow with some, with some things. And we worked from the school out. And so that's all prepped and put back. And, and so we can access that cooler tomorrow for that delivery. So that worked out pretty well. We'll see how... It's gonna be a little stumbling, blocking maybe getting over a little hump. But we'll give them, we have access to that cooler now anyway, so, so it's going pretty well. And then same thing with rerunning of the buses and drop-off. So I've been kind of observing that as well. A lot less congestion up on that north end with the head start. And bus drivers are driving too slow, as Carla mentioned. We have apparel or even looking at putting a, an extra patrol. If we have a student that would be available to do so there. But all in all, it's going down pretty well. Ryan's got some positive feedback as well. So we're still monitoring, but we'll see what, if we make any changes in the future or keep it this way.
I was just gonna ask, that was my question. Are you thinking of just like keeping it that way or...
Yep, so we'll be talking about that some more.
We're, we're piloting it and seeing it and working on it.
Well, the front, the front buses, I mean, that's what we've been doing. And so they, what they've done in the past and the plan that I had designed with Bark Design and that we had put out there during all the COVID stuff, we had so many grades go to the one door and so many grades go to the other door, even for like the parent pickup and everything, you know, so that you weren't having kids down by, you know, Mrs. Stich's classroom going up the front door, things like that. So you keep everybody kind of in their own lanes. And usually, at one point, and I know this was something that maybe people were upset about, but at one point you did go up and around because if your kids were picked up at the main door, not, you know, the kindergarten door, you went up and around and you parked to keep the flow going. And that's, you know, so just, just, I mean, we've always used that front part to always pick up kids. And I mean, my daughter's twelve years old, so...
So that, so lower, that smaller U-shaped area, that's, you know, seems to be working pretty well. Some parents still get out, walk their kids out.
Yep.
We designated a crosswalk, the cross from the front, the front entryway to the park side. So there's a designated, and buses come up to that and, and as they, they even stop depending on, you know, waiting for kids or, or parrot across and then come through. And then there's a, a drop-off spot just past on the west end, the canopy. And so, yeah, we only have six buses, a lot easier to manage six people versus fifty parents or plus. And but the congestion by far has gotten way down on that north end for buses trying to make the corner for just tying everything up. I know Ryan brought up a concern last winter. It's on a little bit of an incline in the morning and so we're trying to get going after dropping off. He had to drive all the way backwards because he couldn't get going on that incline. So those are things, some things to consider as well coming up. So that's what I'm looking for. We're still monitoring this and, and it's a good, good way to pilot. You know, we're kind of forced to pilot it due to the construction, but so we're just...
And that construction is gonna be done after M D?
Yes.
That right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So we'll, we'll keep tabs on that. And then just moving ahead, dropping equipment for the winter. Heat's up in the building. Joe's still working through some of the issues that arise. But all in all, once we have that system in place to keep going, then it's been pretty good. A couple of cuts been there, but there again, learning the building as well for him. And that's all I have.
Any questions for Mike? Mark? Mr. Chair? And, and I, I appreciate this one because you and I have sat out there also. But I think one of the things that we need to do is, is more informational to the parents. We have to keep them moving because all of a sudden they decide to play with their kids out in the field a little bit. So we don't know who's coming and going yet.
Sure.
And I think if we can just get them to come and go and then we keep the full traffic moving on the avenue there.
Do all the parents, like, are you guys noticing that? Do all the parents like realize what the flow is supposed to be? Because sometimes having a visual aid and posting it on Facebook, I mean, a lot of people do go to the Chisholm page and they look, okay, what are we supposed to do? And maybe blasting it out there through the Facebook page, I think, you know, would also help keep that flow and just having it bolded on some kind of map. Like, parents, we ask, you know, yes, the park looks fun, but if you could maybe come back to the park and play after everybody has, you know, departed the school at this time and give a time, you know, maybe that would help with that.
And we can talk about child support, putting something out there. And then also too, even looking at making that in one way. Because after eight o'clock, I've seen a couple of parents coming backwards, which could cause confusion versus if we just have them, everybody enter from the south. That way, even if they get messed up and they get in there and they're not supposed to be, at least everybody's going to the same way.
Well, I definitely believe that you better make sure you have it all figured out before you get it up there too much for the parents. Since this is just a pilot, I mean...
And that's, and that's why...
Because change is not good with parents.
And that's, and that's why I would just monitor it now to see.
Yeah, to see what works best.
Or, you know, kind of put people in panic anyways.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thanks, Mike. Okay, moving on to item six. Motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of the minutes of the September twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-two regular meeting. Payroll for the months of September two thousand twenty-two of five hundred seventy-seven thousand, one hundred fifty-two dollars and forty cents. And accounts payable for the month of September twenty twenty-two. And accounts payable for the month of September twenty twenty-two of three hundred twenty-five thousand four hundred twenty-eight dollars and eighty-six cents. Uh, looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion by Cindy.
Support.
Support by Danielle. Comments or questions on the consent agenda?
I just didn't realize I was that targeted.
Yeah, you were, you were in there all the time.
Okay. Uh, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries. Moving on to item seven, personnel. Item A is a motion to approve the hiring of Nicholas Malani to job number two oh seven. Level one boys' basketball coach, effective October third, two thousand and twenty-two. Who made that motion? Motion is by Mark, is it a support? Support by Shelley. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Moving on to the business portion, item A. A motion to approve the proposal, proposal from Captivate Media Plus Consulting for the amount of four thousand dollars for three one-minute video referendum videos. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion just for discussion.
Motion by Mark.
Second.
Second by Shelley. Greg and Casey.
So when they make the three one-minute referendum videos and maybe the superintendent can help me on this. It's gonna be three different videos that are run, whereas the four thousand dollars, we're just running three one-minute video.
So when I met them this morning, they had had a list of people that they wanted to do snippets from. And so they were up to a minute with the people that they're making. Again, I don't wanna be misquoted. I don't know if it was one video with all of them in it or if they were doing snippets. Um, but Jeff will be on the call during the discussion. If you wanted to table it and try to vote after that, you, you could. I told him to call him twenty-five thirty-eight cents.
I guess I would like to table it because four thousand dollars for three little one-minute videos. I mean, we're getting more views on, I mean, you know, the little girls singing. I mean, even like the, the bowl. Uh, the, the bill, your bowl videos. I mean, how many views are we on that one? I, I mean, I've been seeing lots of action on our Facebook page where why don't, like, it was talked about at one of our previous meetings. Why don't we have our kids get out there and people start sharing it, you know?
Well, I see on the, um, well, yes, they've been putting out videos also. But honestly, I don't know. I, I think people, the biggest complaint I hear from people is, well, I don't see nothing about anything. I don't see anything about anything. It's like, I don't know how much more can, besides me running up down Main Street, you know, with my Blue Street shirt on. I don't know.
I don't see a lot of paper. I don't see anything in mailboxes.
Is that nice? One that just went out?
Never went out to Balkan. We are not advertising in Balkan. I never got any, I have not yet seen anything in my mailbox. The only thing that's on my road is my boat, yes. But we need to hit Balkan. We're not hitting Balkan.
We are hitting Balkan on.
Maybe on one side, but there's multiple sides.
It went out to the post office, the latest one, and it was supposed to hit every one within our zip codes that are in our.
Cause I, I mean, I've been watching and I mean, I'm on.
I think Jackie's been getting stuff.
She's at the beginning of, uh, beginning of McNibbin. I'm at the very end. I'm the last house to say, okay. Yeah, but I don't know if it's the same mail person or what, but I have not gotten anything on.
But I know that, I know that, um, yeah, and people.
Oh, jeez, I watch that.
People I know are at, more at the beginning, I guess. I don't know.
I guess I agree with Adrian that, you know, we have to do everything possible. So I would like to hear what they have to say, for sure.
Yeah, I would.
Oh, I'd like to hear it for sure. But I, I think we need to start seeing more mailings. We need to.
That last mailing was a good one. I was, yeah. Cause it was big and it was informative to them.
And I think that's something um that this, the upcoming meeting that we're having with Balkan, you know, not we, but Adrian's having with Balkan. I think it's something that we ask, how many of you have gotten our mailings? Cause if they're not getting our mailings, we need to question the post office then, because we're paying for that. And I mean, you're paying for it all to go out, so. Yeah. But I mean, the older people aren't on social media. So how are we gonna get these videos to the older people? We're not. We need to hit mailings.
It's a good question to ask when we talked about it. So do we have to change the motion to table it or anything like that?
I think we make a motion to table, but you made a motion, so.
For lack of time sake, I am not going to remove my motion.
Okay.
Or reset my motion.
Yeah.
So that, that needs to go now?
So put a motion on the table to table, please.
I'll make a motion to table.
Okay, motion to table by Danielle.
I think so.
We gotta vote on his first, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so the motion before us is to approve the proposal for four thousand dollars. We have a motion and a second on that. So all those in favor? Say aye.
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 Do I have to say aye at the second minute?
No.
No.
You have to say no if you don't want it to pass so we can table it.
Oh, gotcha.
Okay. Motion lost, so lack of majority. Sex, my second motion on the table is a motion to table. Item A of the, of the business.
Can I ask a?
Portion.
Would that be tabled until tonight or to the meeting? Okay, gotcha.
Next one on the table.
Great, we have to remove it from the table then. So we can do all that.
Okay.
Just take a break.
So do we have a motion to table?
I make a motion to table.
Okay. Table is by Danielle.
Support.
Support by Cindy. Table. Okay. Any discussion?
We kind of will.
Yeah, we do. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Okay, motion is tabled. Okay, item B is a motion to adopt the resolutions. Okay, the resolution accepting stack snack donations from Liz Jackala to support the Chisholm Public Schools. Resolution accepting a ten-dollar donation for Marion and William Cooper to support the Chisholm Public School Foundation in memory of Sheila Kinnin. Resolution accepting one hundred fifty-dollar donation from the Chisholm Lunch Bunch to support the Chisholm Public Schools. Do we have a motion?
So maybe.
Motion is by Shelley. Support?
Support.
Support by Cindy. Go call, please, Danielle.
Okay, hold on. Let me catch up on my notes. I'm not a, not as fast as a.
Yeah, I know. It's okay.
I'm trying to also pay attention to what I'm voting for here.
Yeah.
Um, okay, we'll call vote. I gotta make note of this. Um, Rice.
Yes.
Simon is not here. Flappy?
Yes.
Casey?
Yes.
Rahab?
Yes.
Satter? Yes.
Okay, motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, um. And moving on to the uh first reading of a bunch of policies, um, they'll take no action on this. Item C is the first reading of policy two eleven. Criminal or civil action against the school district, school board member, employee, or student. Item D is the first reading of policy number two twelve, school board member development. Item E is the first reading of policy two thirteen, school board committees. Item F, first reading of policy number two fourteen, out-of-state travel by school board members. Item G, first reading of policy number three oh one, school district administration. Item H, first reading of policy number three oh two, superintendent. Item I, first reading of policy number three oh three, superintendent selection. Item J, first reading of policy number three oh four, superintendent contracts, contract duties and evaluation. Item K is first reading of policy number three oh five, implementation. And item L is the first reading of policy number three oh six, administrative code of ethics. Item M is the first reading of policy number one fifty-five, outside agency supporting schools. Item N is a motion, oh, okay. So that's our policies that we will not taking action on tonight.
Oh.
So. Moving on to item M. A motion to approve payment to Winder Corporation in the amount of thirty-one thousand four hundred fifty dollars and sixty-seven cents for the purchase of eight acoustical shells for the auditorium. There are motion. Motion by Cindy. There are support by Shelley. Discussion.
I think it's important just to note as this superintendent stated to us that the band instructor uh did vote for Grant from community foundation.
Yeah.
So then it's important that people know that, yeah.
It's important in places.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Okay. Moving on to discussion, Adrian, if you would get a hold of Mr. Dale.
I will call him right now. I'm gonna guess I wrote a nine and a seven, so we're gonna try this.
Mr. Chair, while we're in, can I ask you a question? Just on the information on the enrollment numbers, do we follow that sucker down?
It's in a, it was in a packet, seven hundred and.
Seven twenty-eight.
Please, I have a favor. All right. Okay, let's see if we can all hear you.
All right, let's see. So yeah, let me know if you can hear me. And I don't think me speaking louder is gonna help much, but I'll try.
I think we're good.
Fantastic. So Adrian, tell me about the handout. Um, uh, did you do a, a two pages or two slides per page thing? Or did you do something else? Or what does it look like?
So before we get there, they have, they tabled and had some questions about the videos for clarification. They wanted to know if there was three one-minute videos or were these getting put together into one video? Or could you just talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, it's, it's three one-minute videos. And the rationale is that then each week we can roll out a new video that has a new message and a new messenger uh in that. And I think that um uh the advantage will be that we'll get better coverage or, or it'll go more places as people see, uh, as people see these videos and, and um, uh, and they'll, they'll share them more. It will, uh, you know, in the um, in the, in kind of the way that they talk about like a news cycle. We'll be extending the news cycle by having three different short videos.
So that definitely was our big question. And then they'll just, you'll do a new one each week? Is that what you said? I mean, three, I don't know. Yeah.
Well, yeah, we would release them sort of one at a time.
Okay.
Okay.
And being released.
We're talking on social media, on our website. Um, how are available options, correct?
That's correct. And um, uh, one of the things that we can do is uh the, the, the algorithm on your social media pages on, on Facebook actually is a, is, is good for public schools. You get, you get kind of a broad range of, of uh who can see it. Whereas for a private business, they really, the algorithm doesn't let many people see it unless you pay. Um, and so, but we can see with the first video, what kind of reach does it have? And um, and then we can, uh, with the second video, we might say, well, let's put, let's put fifteen or twenty dollars into trying to see if we can expand the reach. But we can tailor it so that it really doesn't leave your zip code, basically. Um, uh, and so, um, so there is, there are some things that we can do to make sure that um, that it's getting to the people that we wanted to get to.
And they are only going out on social media, so we wouldn't release any of this on a public access television site?
That's an option. And um, uh, for instance, um, well, I, I, all right. Do you record your school board meetings? And if so, are they played back on cable television? And if so, could we um, uh, put the video at the beginning or end of, um, you know, or both of the, of the school board meeting? Or, you know, and just share them with the cable access. They could, they could tag it on to whatever programming they wanted to take it on to.
I'll get you that answer tomorrow. They were unsure of what our contract was.
But we currently do record our meetings and they go through YouTube, right?
Yes, we currently individually as a school district, we put ours on our YouTube channel.
Got it, got it, okay.
But our tech guy could certainly tag these to those or creatively somehow get those on our channel.
Well, and if we're in that contract.
I think that's possible, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions?
I love the, yeah, I love the idea of sharing it with cable access, you know, just every, you know, every possible way that we can get it out there is, is the way to go. Um, our, uh, uh, what we can do is add to the publicity by, by just making sure that um, all of our friends and family that live in town know that these videos are available. And, and um, and, and you can, you can ask them on Facebook, hey, share this video. Even better is, you know, when you see them in person, ask, you know, go and ask them in person to say, we got these new videos out. I'd love for you to go and look at them and then share them on your social media. That request will help to spread it more, more far and wide.
And we did just link your website, the Blue Street Pride, onto our current website. So the old information is gone and all the new information is up.
Fantastic, that's great.
Any other questions?
I don't know.
Okay, so what I presented them with were, instead of going back to back, I just printed them. So they had your slideshow and then I gave them a sample letter from um the school board as a whole. So those are, those are the pieces of information they have in front of them.
Great, fantastic. I'll just address the, the letter um first, and that is that um, uh, we do a kind of a brochure, kind of a mailing. Um, it's expected to arrive in homes and this would be sent to all residences and should it arrive in homes um, uh, in the last week of October. Um, so about, about a week to a week and a half or so before the election. And um, and it has more information than the fact sheet does. Um, uh, and so for, first, and, and it's set up in a way that it's easy to page through it. And basically there's kind of a, a message per page. Um, we'll have a, um, a sample of what it looks like, the electronic version of it, uh, by Thursday. And, and so that's something that, that your superintendent can share with you at that time. The, the third page, the, there's the cover of the second page and the third page, the third page is, is this letter from the board. And it's intended to show people that there is, you know, this was a unanimous vote by the board. You know, everyone on the board has, has chosen to support putting these two questions on the ballot. And so, so we want to show that in this, in this publication. And, and it kind of dovetails with, 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 with this slideshow that, that I'm gonna walk through with the roles of the school board, which is, which is that we want you to be out there, and we want you to tell people why you chose to put those ballot questions on the, or those questions on the ballot. And that you chose unanimously to do that. And so it's, it's, this is one demonstration of how the, how the board can, can accomplish that role of sharing information with people.
So is this letter part of what we've already paid them to do? The four thousand dollars is additional just for the, for the videos?
Correct.
So the mailings is already something we're paying for, okay.
Yes, the mailings, what you're paying for, for the mailings is the postage and the printing, which is about, about two thousand dollars, somewhere in that neighborhood. So, so yeah, there's an investment involved. The fact sheet also costs, I think, around thirteen hundred dollars or so for printing and, and postage. By the way, have, that fact sheet, I think, should be, should have arrived in homes, have, have you seen that?
It has not arrived in all of Balkan, I can honestly tell you that. So it is not going out to every home that it needs to go to.
So it's, it's missing in some places?
None of my neighbors have seen a thing, they've never even heard, nobody on Cologne Road in Balkan has even heard about the referendum, the only reason they know is because I'm their neighbor. So it's, I'm, I'm telling you, it's not going out, I get my mail every day.
Have you received it at your home?
No, I'm the one that lives in Balkan.
Okay, I think then that it might not be out yet, it might be that it will arrive in the next day or two.
When did you guys receive yours in town, Chizam?
It's Thursday, I think, yes, it's Saturday?
Saturday, so you guys received it days ago.
Because Monday there was no mail, so.
Yeah.
Sunday, Monday, no mail, so. So, yeah, so Saturday, yeah, so it could still be.
Email us if you do get it.
I think the postal service deliveries are very fast nowadays.
Can I just ask, ask you one question? You're gonna mention the, the two votes in, in the video. Is there some way that we can emphasize that the operating levy is, has been voted on favorably many times in the past? Am I making sense?
Yeah.
Am I making sense on that one? Because I certainly...
Especially in this letter going out, that should be in there, I agree. I mean, we haven't had our operating levy turned down in years. Right, agreed.
Does that, does that make sense, sir?
Yeah, so I'm gonna just go on to the website, remind myself of what, what we say. And yeah, I think it, you know, actually you make a good point, I think it's not as clear as it should be, which is that this is a, this is a voter-approved operating money that is being renewed, that we're asking to renew. And so as I look at the website, I think it needs to, that, that needs to be tweaked so that people recognize that this is something that they've approved in the past. And that this renewal is clear that it's not going to cost them anymore. This is a zero tax impact, or that first question.
And I think that part was on the fact sheet.
I think it was, yeah.
Yeah, that part was, yeah.
Do we also, are we also putting it out there on that website, and also on this fact sheet of an easy way for homeowners to get the link of cost? Because that was one of the biggest things that I had shared out there on my page is, when you sign into the website, if you click this link, you can put in your parcel code and...
Then it's on there.
Okay. Because that would be good to make sure that people have an easy way to figure out, what is this gonna cost you a month?
Yeah, okay.
Any other questions for Jeff, or Jeff, you have any other comments?
Thank you for your time, Jeff.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Was he going through these slides?
He's going through these.
Do you want to go through the slides with them, or did you want to, how did you want to approach that?
Yeah, I'd like to do that, if we could.
Go ahead.
I really, I, you know, I I have to apologize for not being there in person. My preference would be to meet with you all, preferably in like June. Instead, here we are in October with a month to go, or a little bit less than a month to go, and sometimes that's just the way it works out. And so, so you know, if you, if you have to do this again, and, and you, and you want to work with somebody to help, to have them help you, earlier is always better.
So we're talking twenty years, Jeff.
Yeah. And I'll be long gone, Jeff, so.
Oh, I...
Shouldn't be witness to stuff.
All right, you know, I, I'll be honest, after seeing photos, yeah, twenty years ago would have been a good time, yeah. Well, I, I, I have to tell you that I, I worked on a referendum in St. James, Minnesota, where they had lost six bond referendum in a row. And then, and then we worked on number seven, and we helped, helped them pass the seventh try. And there's the, I, I, it probably helps to have us be there, but also it helped that their, their superintendent led them on a process that brought the, the strong no voters together with the strong yes voters, and they kind of hashed out a plan that was pretty much you could see the, the, that, that, you know, the fingerprints of both the no folks and the yes folks on that, on that thing. And, and now they had, because they had run six of these in a row, they had unfortunately, a very divided community, and so I, I'm not hearing that about your community at this point, I hope that's not, I hope that's not where you end up. But but, but that process of getting people together in the room and do, and so, so you've got a process. And that's what helps to ensure that, that community members are on board. So especially those task force members who really have a deep dive into understanding what the needs are, they're out there sharing that information with their friends and neighbors and relatives. That's critical, and so, so, so you've done that, that's, that's, that's the stage for making it a, a much better chance to win. So that's one, one of the things that we, that we always advocate for is to, is to conduct that kind of process, and so we're happy that you did that. The next piece of that process is then telling people, and, and again, just due to certain factors, it's not probably happening as quickly as you would like, or as I would like, to get that information out there. But there's two pieces, there's the district, and then there's the, the yes committee or the citizens group. So if you're looking at the, the second of these two slides in this slideshow, it kind of shows these two groups, but there's kind of a dotted line between those two. In, in, in the reason for that is that district employees and, and, and school board members can participate in the yes committee or in the citizens, in that citizens' role. So here's, here's what the, here's what those roles are. For the school district, on the third slide, that, that is labeled District Informational Campaign, your goal from the school district's perspective is to make sure that everyone knows about what's going on. This is the impact that your yes vote will have, and this is the impact that your no vote will have. We want everyone to know what will happen either way, no matter how they vote. And we want to communicate with everybody, and that's why when we send mailings out, we send them to all residences and businesses. And, and if this particular mailing hasn't arrived there yet, it will be shortly. One of the things about what we call saturation, or the post office calls a saturation mail, is that it's their cheapest rate, and it also allows them two weeks to deliver it. Almost always they deliver it within two or three days. But if a particular postal route carrier has got a huge amount of mail, they might choose to wait and, and carry it the next day or the day after that. So, so we want, we want to communicate with everybody. And we can only communicate in a neutral manner, or what we mean by that is just factual information, there can be no advocacy for or against any candidate or question by a school district. And, but it's, it still is okay to spend school district funds to share this neutral or factual information. So how do we do that? We do it the same way that you've always been communicating, there's, there's your website, there's social media, there's email. We also choose to do direct mail because there are certain people that are not going to get your emails, or there are certain people that aren't on Facebook or on other social media. And then if there is a newsletter that is already in existence, then we try to put something in that. And then the, the best thing, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna digress for a moment and tell, and tell my Halloween bloodmobile story, we're, we're coming up on Halloween. And a long time ago, I used to work for a cable television company in public access, and we had a big studio. And it was big enough to hold a blood drive in it. And so we chose to do it on Halloween because I guess we're weird and we thought that'd be fun. And, but you really haven't lived until you've seen a Red Cross worker who is dressed as Dracula carry a platter across the room, and on that silver platter are ten bags of, of donated blood. It's fun in its own way. When I did publicity for the blood drive, I would hang up flyers on, on, on the businesses, on doors of businesses, and I would, I would put a, a stand up on the countertop at a business, and I would you know, put, you know, flyers on bulletin boards at the library, and, and I'd send emails out, and no amount of me putting flyers up or sending emails out got anybody to call me to sign up. So instead, what I had to do was to go and talk to people personally and ask them. On October thirty-first, we're holding a blood drive between four o'clock and seven o'clock, what time is best for you? And they would give me a time, and I would have them sign up. I may have warmed them up a little bit with a flyer, but they didn't call me. I had to go and ask them. So this is where the school district's responsibility lies, and, and what we try to do from the consultant role is to, is to give you the tools, but then we need to go out and meet with people, and I know that Adrian has got some, quite a few meetings and presentations scheduled to go and share information. That is how, excuse me, that is how we are able to reach people in, in a way that when we interact with them, they're more likely to, you know, in my case, come and donate blood at the blood drive, or in your case, come and vote. So the presentations and meetings are important, and, and, and that's, that's partly where your role comes in, and we'll talk about that in a minute. So the vote yes committee is different, it cannot use any school district funding, it has to raise its own money. But it can, it gets goal is to pass the referendum, it can use advocacy language. And and it's, it's, what, what we want for the yes committee to do is be very targeted in its work. So while the district is sending information out to everybody, the, the yes committee is targeting people who are most likely to vote yes. And we have a, a ranked voter file from Education Minnesota that allows us to do that. So so if we look at the citizens committees, you know, approach, they're gonna use a political campaign approach, they're not going to use a blanketed sort of shotgun approach to their communication. And on this, on this particular slide where it says GOTV, you probably know this as elected officials, that means get out the vote. And so the starting point is identify yes voters, and then the ending point is get out the vote, get them to the polls. So I, actually, I'm gonna do a quick look at my, or check in my email here, because I'm fairly certain that I've seen that phone calling has begun there.
It has.
Yes.
Very good, yeah, there's the, there's the October ten call report, and, and so, yeah, things are moving forward. That's very good, and the committee is also scheduling events, that's very good. So there is, these are the two things that have to happen, we need the school district to communicate, and we need residents to be part of that process. The next slide is, that says from MSBA, this is a portion of a fairly large brochure that they produced on what can be shared with people through the school district, and what can be shared with people through a, through a committee. And I want you to note, and I don't know how readable it is, it's probably pretty small type, but in that box that's around the personal expression space there, it says that board members and staff can serve on vote yes or vote no committees during their personal time. So the key here is not during school time. If you're a staff person, you know, when you're on the clock, you cannot, you cannot do vote yes or vote no activities. You can't use school equipment to produce advocacy flyers or, or other things that are, that are, that are advocating for, against the referendum. For school board members, when you're, you know, you're on the clock officially, when you're at the board meeting, which is right now. And then there are a few other times, you know, on committees and other things, when you are on the clock, but for the most part, you're not. And you are allowed to use advocacy language, you know, most of the time. And if you are, you know, whether you're for or against the referendum, you should, you should tell people. So there's a note here that says that board members and staff can put vote yes or vote no stickers on their vehicles that they drive to school, it's an exercise in free speech. They delineate that from like a T-shirt. You, if you're a staff person, you can't wear a T-shirt that says vote yes or vote no on it to school, because, because you're on, on school property and you're on the clock at that time. But because your car spends most of its time, you know, not on school grounds, it, it's okay to have something on it. And so again, the delineation is simply this. If you are a part of the yes committee, if you're on the clock, you can't use advocacy language, if you're, if you're on the clock, you can use factual language, factual language to be able to talk about a referendum. So an easy way to put that is, you could say, right now, at the board meeting, vote November eighth. But you can't say vote yes or vote no November eighth.
Yeah.
Maybe before, well, I'm gonna keep going because you're gonna have questions about the whole role thing and how it fits in with the, with some of the state statute language. And so I'm, I'll keep going, and then we'll, and we'll take questions at the end here. So the next piece is roles for the administrative team. And so the, the meet with people piece is coming back here again. Staff, parents, community members, our audiences that we want to reach. We want to provide factual information with these folks. Staff is really important because they're the folks that have, at a, you know, at a football game, people recognize their teacher and they go talk to them. At parent-teacher conferences, this is who they talk to. At elementary school, probably on a weekly basis, you're probably emailing back and forth with your teachers maybe. And so we need to make sure that they have information, that they are informed and educated about what the referendum is all about. that they are informed and educated about what the referendum is all about. And so they're kind of the first place that we want to educate. And then we're gonna move on to providing information to parents and to other community members. So having information displays at school and hosting tours and meetings are important. Is there a question?
Nope.
Okay, all right. So again, how do we provide that information? It's the website, it's weekly e-newsletters. How many of you on the board received an e-newsletter?
I don't. No, I don't.
And how many of you have students in school?
Three of us.
Okay. So what I know from the database that was provided to us is that we got a staff database and we got a parent database. And uploaded that into an e-newsletter system called Cost and Contact. And we sent an e-newsletter out last week. It wasn't until Sunday, I believe, that we sent it. And so I guess that was technically this week, so a couple days ago. And depending on your email system, you might have to go and find it in your spam folder or in, or if you use Gmail. Sometimes Gmail will divvy things up into different tabs. You might have to find it in a different tab. And then if you are, if you're not a staff person or a parent of a student currently, then you might not have received it. And that might be because we weren't provided with your email addresses. So Adrian, that's one thing that we'll have to check is to make sure that we have everybody's email addresses.
And that was going to their personal emails, correct?
Yeah, correct. More than likely, whatever was provided to us in the database.
So I got an announcement from the peach jar thing. Okay. So yeah, I did get an announcement Sunday about the empty bowl and, you know, the trick and treat and things like that. So I do get those right away. So I don't know, maybe Pam could send out? She can't with that?
But that's going to our school email.
Mine goes to my personal email. My peach jar goes to my personal email, that doesn't go to my work.
See, everything went to my school email.
So nobody in here with children received the e-letter?
All righty. So let's first, Adrian, do you happen to have a computer nearby? And would you be able to show people what it looks like?
I did. I don't get it. Yeah, I'm in my personal right now.
She did get it, okay.
So I got it four days ago.
And she's showing people what it looked like off her phone.
Okay, perfect, great, great, great.
Yeah, it came from.
Yeah, I got it too.
Yep, no, we got another one, so we're good.
Yeah. One of the things that we know is because we use the system, we know how many people opened it. And so we know that around 57 or something like that percent of the people that we sent it to opened this email. And then a certain number of people, what we would click through is what we call it, which is, there are links within that email that will take you to the referendum website. And so it was, I'm trying to remember what the statistic is, I don't have it here in front of me, but a decent number of people then clicked and then went to the website and looked at the website. So the good news is that, and what's a good rate? Does it feel like 50% or so or 60% is a good rate? That's about 30% higher than normal. Typically, a 33% open rate is spectacular. And so your open rate for this e-newsletter is really strong for those people that received it. Now, do we have everybody's email address? Not necessarily. One of the things that is typical for every school district is that parents will change their email address and then not tell anybody at the school. And so we don't even know that we don't have a good email address for them anymore. So you will find people that will say, no, I didn't get it. And they really didn't because they don't, because they're not using that address anymore. So all we can do is ask people to, please update your emails. And so that's one of the things that we can find other ways to communicate is if you're missing the e-newsletter, please make sure that the school has your current address. So weekly e-newsletters now through the election. One mail piece that's dropping, we hope, in the next day or two, and then the other one at the end of the month. And then social and traditional media, which is going to start in the next day or so.
And then you're also working with Travis on a countdown and some other creative things on our social media pages.
Yep, exactly, exactly.
Do we know the average age of those living in Balkan? Because, I mean, I could think about an average age of those living in Balkan, if we're only sending one mailing out. Don't you think we should do another mailing, especially in the rural routes?
There's more things.
So yeah, here's where, and actually, that's actually a good introduction to the next piece because when the school district does two mail pieces, then there's also mail pieces from the committee. And so there's, and then we're also, you know, we will hope that we also show up in traditional media, in the newspaper. So we hope that people will see this in front of them so many times that eventually they will pay attention because we all know that it takes something like seven times of seeing something before you actually kind of internalize it. It's why people run advertising on television and you see the same ad over and over and over again. It's because eventually you can, you've got the dialogue memorized and now all of a sudden it's starting to sink in. So we don't have that kind of budget, but we will. We will be in front of people in a number of ways. And so we think that eventually that will start to sink in with people.
And you had mentioned something earlier about community events. And Lisa said that I need to announce that these are upcoming meetings so that publicly everyone hears this. We have the empty bowl coming up, Mike Hoheisel at Valentini's, the Balkan Township meeting, Tom and Jerry's meeting, the city council and school board is meeting jointly tomorrow. There's also a city council and school board candidate forum coming up. There is one of the last football and volleyball home games and hopefully home playoff games. And there will be some Vote Yes meetings moving forward too.
Could you repeat that?
I don't know. You're out of order. Could you throw the order?
No, I haven't.
So Vote Yes is tomorrow at 6:00. That's finished.
That's yes, that's the next Vote Yes committee. But we have the Chisholm Board and City meeting first.
And Adrian, are you okay if I join you on the 20th for the Balkan one? Just to see where people are.
I mean, I think you can all be there.
I'll be there.
I'll be there.
I think we should all be there. And I think Rochelle might go too, so.
Especially to the Balkan one, we've gotta get into that.
When is that, the, I think the bowl one?
The bowl is November 1st.
Yes. Michael's, sorry, Michael has will be at Valentini's one, right?
Yeah.
Did you have more for the group yet, Jeff?
Yep, I got a little bit more. Some of you who are further away, it's harder to hear. But did I hear, tell me if I heard this right. Is it okay if I join you at Balkan? Is that what I heard?
Yes.
That is music to my ears. That's fabulous, that's exactly what we want. And so the last couple of things, the last couple of slides here, you know, this is what the Yes Committee is working on, is meeting with people. I'm just gonna skip then to the roles of school board members. Be visible in your support. And that's one way to do it. Go to these meetings with your superintendent. Be supportive of your superintendent. Talk to people while you're there, find out what their questions are. Be the eyes and ears in the community, you know, the superintendent can't be everywhere. And so if you can be in the community and talking to people and they have questions about the referendum, if you can't answer those, then we want to know what they are and we can help answer those and get back to those folks. And then also we can start adding to the frequently asked questions on the referendum website so that people can go and search that out and find the answers to those. And so being at Balkan Township and being at Valentini's and being at some of these other events is really important. We don't need all of you there at all times and of course, you'd have to post that meeting anyway. And so if there's one or two of you that can join Adrian at each of these meetings, that would be great. And you can play as much of a role or as little of a role as you'd like. So if you want to speak, then more power to you, then let's do it. Let's have you tell people, you know, here's why you put this ballot question out there. If you're, you know, if you don't feel like you want to take that role, then at least sort of mingle with people before or after a presentation and hear what the questions are. I think that's, even if you're just in the room, that's enough for people to say, and you know, like wear a name tag that says I'm with the school board because some people don't know who you are, but maybe most do. But yeah, people will need to see that you're there. I think that's really important. You know, do kind of take those speaking points, those talking points that we've provided to you and have at least a couple of them memorized. You know, when it comes down to it though, share your experience in your own words, you know, say, I've been in the basement and you don't want to go in the basement. And it's, not only does it look bad, it doesn't smell good either. You know, share what your story is. And I think that that will help people to recognize that, yeah, there's a true need here. Again, you can take any role that you would like on the Yes Committee. If there are form banks that are going, you should, you can play that role. Whether it's, and by the way, it's always incumbent upon me to say, you can do that for the No Committee as well. Though that's probably not the direction that you would want to go. Lead by example is, you know, we need staff to say, okay, my leadership is out there and doing this, and parents to say, my leadership is out there and doing this, you've already led by example by putting this on the ballot. We would love for you to continue to lead by example by being with the superintendent at these meetings and playing an active role in helping people to learn more about the referendum.
Well, one of the things I'd just like to reiterate is, we're months and months and months and in some cases, years into this process. So we are really deep into the weeds. So we're fine-tuning dollars and cents and things that, it's centered around the children and we have to keep that in mind. And that has to be part of our focus and the conversation. So we're like years ahead of where the public is first hearing about some of these things. So it's just a friendly reminder that this is about the future and our children.
I agree, because I think a lot of community members think that we just all of a sudden thought, oh, let's build a new school. They don't realize all the meetings and all the time that we as a school board have spent in the last year, sitting down with InGenza and touring the buildings. And I mean, the time that we've taken, you know, taken out of our days to do this, it wasn't just an overnight decision.
That's a great message to share. Here's one more thing that I'd like to have your kind of thoughts about. A lot of people don't have kids in school. In every district in Minnesota, between 20 and 30% of most school districts' populations have kids in school. That means that 70 or 80% do not. And so some people are gonna feel disconnected from the school and they're gonna wonder what's in it for them. And what's in it for them is that there are Realtors studies and business studies and a whole bunch of data out there, surveys that say that families choose where to live based on the school district. If there is a decent school district in town, that's where they're gonna move. And so that means that for those people that live in town, their property values stay high because there's a market there to sell to because families could potentially buy their home. And so this is a proven fact that property values in towns that have schools are, have higher property values. And schools, towns that don't have a school have not so high property values. And so there is something in it for people that don't have a student in schools. And that is that when they go to sell their home, there's more likely to be a buyer and there's more likely to, they're more likely to be able to sell that home for a higher value. And so if people ask you, well, what's in it for me? I don't have kids in school. That's one of the key messages that we like to use. And what do you think of that? And does that work? Do you think that will work in your community?
We've always had a very positive.
Yeah.
Our community has always had a positive reaction to referendums. We really have. We have an older community, but they've always stepped up and supported us 100%. So I mean, I'm hoping that things haven't, you know, changed. I mean, I've lived here my whole life and my family lives here, I mean, we all, we never voted no on a referendum, ever. I mean, so I'm just hoping that.
I have two cents.
Okay, give it.
So the last time we did a bond referendum was in 2000. And it passed. It was for $6.3 million to remodel all of our buildings. The last time we did a operating levy referendum was 10 years ago and it passed 80%. So supportive is the right word for our community. Money is money. But again, I don't have kids in the school, mine graduated and are gone. So I'm for this and I'm on a fixed income, I don't care. But something was brought to my attention that I'm gonna research. One of our neighboring cities, Buell, lost their school because they merged, consolidated with Mountain Iron. And I've been asked to find out how much, if I can, the property values in Buell dropped after they consolidated. And I know the mayor of Buell and maybe he can help me out with that. But I'm assuming it's quite a bit. And so I'm gonna find that out and I'll share that with the Yes Committee as soon as I do.
So I am a real estate agent. And I can tell you that it does affect our, it affects more than just the property values. It affects what we have in our community if we don't continue on with a good school. I mean, there's so much, and this is what I share with a lot of, because I am hit with questions. You know, my property taxes, well, really, I mean, my house is worth $250,000. It's $68 a month that I'm gonna pay for my kids to go to a better school. But I'll waste that at the restaurant next weekend when we go out to eat. I mean, you gotta look at some give and take here and it's for our kids in our community. And that's the biggest thing that we have to remember. It's not so much the property values and all of that. It's what are we giving back to our kids as adults in our communities? And that's, I mean, that's where I go with it because, I mean, this community started when these generations started here. If we don't continue supporting our kids, who's gonna keep our community going? They're gonna want to move again for the better school districts and things like that. And our teachers need to have credit given too because I mean, we have an amazing staff that really pays. Because I mean, we have an amazing staff that really pay attention to these kids and make them feel like a human and they're not just a butt in the seat. They're not just another number for us and our teachers do an amazing job and that's, we need to keep that too. So I mean, those are little things that we need to push out to the community beyond just property value. We need to get them away from the numbers and not feeling so bad about the numbers and realizing that our staff and our, our buildings, there's value here and we need to keep that value going.
That statement is, is the reason why video is so important and the reason why the words that we are producing are not as effective as the personal ask. And that is because you've got so much passion. That, several of you have talked this way, you know, you've got the passion, you care about your community, you care about the, about the next generation. And there are a lot of people that feel that way. And when you say things like that in public, wow, does that go a long way to help people recognize how necessary it is for them to vote in this next election. So I, I mean, that was, I, 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 I hope that you have the opportunity to be able to share those messages when you go out and, and talk to people. That's just wonderful.
Oh, don't worry. We're really a big sharing.
We are. I, I'm not gonna keep you my mouth closed.
Okay, so.
Any other questions?
I don't have any.
No. So Jen Giuliani has the picture of the school board that you were asking about?
Oh, fantastic. I'd love to have that here, yeah.
So if you can reach out to Jen, she'll, she'll get that for you. And then if you can tweet this email to align with some of the questions that they have.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you so much for your, for your input. I really appreciate it.
Well, thank you, Jeff. I think that helped explain things and we'll be chatting in the very near future.
That sounds great. Thank you. I much appreciate all of your service to your community. It's incredibly important and it's hard to, it's hard to recruit people to do your job. It's a challenging job.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Alright, you too. Bye bye.
Okay.
Okay, so. Okay, so we have to continue on. So we're going to, under discussion, Jeff Taylor, Adrian went through the entryway on the south end of the building. So I don't think we need to have any more discussions. We're waiting for stuff and we're after. I mean, and if the teachers close and lock their doors during the day when the kids are in there, we might have, solve a few problems. But again, that's up to them. But just know that we're not sitting by doing nothing here. We gotta wait. I mean, if you don't have parts, you can't put it together. What are you supposed to do? So we are doing something about it. It's just taking too much time. So I don't think we'll have to go through that. Adrian, did you want to say anything on the review and comment from the state?
No, I think I covered that earlier, so that was, um, good news.
Very good news.
Yeah, fabulous.
Which means that they actually looked at the plan and said, this is a sound plan for everyone.
Yeah, yeah.
So they approved it, yeah, the project as a whole based on everything they shared in the document.
Okay. So, um.
And that's a good talking point to the community too. We went through a process with the Department of Ed and they advised us to move forward.
And that's some of the biggest questions that I've been getting and it's like, they say, what have you done? What do you mean? What? We have done our research. We've done what we can do. We have researched and researched and I, we've been going at this for how long?
Two years.
I mean, it's been a long haul. We've made major strides. I think people should be proud of how we've come this far from where we were a year ago. I mean, I think we've come a long way and I just, I just think people just don't, you know, it's like, sometimes it's just, don't be so negative. Just listen, listen and look and see what we've done. We've done all the work to pass this or not pass it or do whatever. This is what is best for our children and I just hope people understand that. Because we have worked hard. You've worked hard. I mean, it has been a very good thing. We have done, we have no regrets. We've done our due diligence. We have done what we were supposed to do.
Oh, we've questioned this.
We have.
We've questioned this.
I have no, I.
Well, the other thing is, is how many, how many different proposals did Ingenza come with? And we had to choose. So we choose. I wanted a seventy-eight million dollar building. Can't have that. I get that. That's what I wanted, okay?
Well, and one comment was that we didn't have a choice to redo this building. Yes, we did. There was a choice on that. I mean, so that's, yeah.
It was a choice, but we were also concerned that the Department of Ed would let us move forward based on the agent condition.
See, and that's what I think that maybe at some of these meetings, maybe I'll tote my, I'll be vague and say, okay, here, this is what we've done. So if you have questions, here it is. You can review all this to see what we've done.
Why?
You know, one of the things that I always tell people, why, why do we need this? And I tell them, very simply, I said, Model T was a nice car. You're not driving one. That's how old this building is. It's a Model T.
Absolutely.
Well said.
That's a good way, but enjoy.
And the other thing is, is the dollar total for all of the things we had to fix is more than the referendum. So what do you want to do?
That's why they need to see their little, that nice little book that I have stashed on my house.
Yeah, that's not a book. So I missed it.
Yeah.
So, okay.
So that's it for that. Under information also, we're accepting the resignation of Angela Sunquist, her professional at the elementary school effective October nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. I found out that we're doing this wrong completely. We just accept resignations and move on.
Oh, we don't have to.
They resign. They wanna leave.
That definitely makes sense.
You learn something new all the time. Enrollment numbers, as you see, seven hundred and twenty-eight as of October sixth. Good numbers. And again, the meeting dates, tomorrow at three thirty, the joint meeting with the city council. Vote yes committee, October tomorrow at six at Jim's Sports Bar. October twentieth, six o'clock at the Vulcan Community Center. October twenty-fourth at six o'clock at Valentini's and that will be Mike Hoheisel coming in with the numbers. November first at six o'clock at Tom and Jerry's. And then there's another one. Is that it?
So we have the empty bowl.
Empty bowl.
November.
Third. And then we have the candidate forum. I can't tell you what some of the questions are, but any person would say they're gonna ask about.
It's good that we know it inside and out.
When is, when is the candidate forum?
Twenty-seventh.
October twenty-seventh.
Yep, and it's at six o'clock and I believe at the senior center.
Center, correct.
Okay.
And then we have one item that you tabled.
Yes.
Make a motion.
Okay. Motion to approve the proposal from Captivate Media Plus Consulting for the amount of four thousand dollars for three one-minute video, one-minute referendum videos. Do we have a motion?
I would say a motion.
Motion is by Mark. Support by Shelley. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
I am.
I oppose. Or concierge? Okay, thank you.
So we don't need to do a vote on that? Because we tabled it and brought it back?
Brought it back. I'm not gonna get this contest.
What, it just, you mean like a roll call meeting? Yeah.
You can.
I'm just wondering if it was something we needed to do.
No.
I think so. Alright.
Okay, and then again, the only other thing is the Rams dinner on December fifteenth at the Iron Trail Event Center in Virginia. Doesn't have here what time it starts, but Lisa can sign us up for that if we wish to. Advantageal is pretty good. Yeah, it is. So, motion to adjourn is in order. Cindy, Shelley, all those in favor?